I'd like to call our earlier board meeting and I S D seven one, any public schools, school board meeting order is November ninth, twenty twenty-two at three thirty P M. And with that, we'll move on to two pledgeable agents. Please stand if you will, if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to item three, a motion to approve the agenda.
Followed.
Support.
Moved by Director Folcher, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Item four, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Support.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Folcher. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item five, public comment.
We have none, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And then I'll turn item six over to Superintendent Ruff.
Mr. Chair, if it would please the Board, our principals have conferences tonight. If we could move the administrative reports up above personnel, that gives them a chance to do their presentations and get back to conferences, if that would be okay.
If you can, with me, the rest of the board. Thank you. So we'll do, do item seven.
Item seven, yes.
And may directors or student director, unless he needs two directors.
And I just have a quick update. I just want to thank all the talented young people we have in our district, our music directors, Mr. Sepora, Ms. Tackenin, Mr. Byrd. The Prism concert on Monday night was absolutely amazing. So, thank you to everybody.
Very nice thinking. With that, we'll turn over anything from principals first.
Yep, we have Mr. Byrd here to give us an update on Washington.
Quick update on events, updates through the fall as of today. Started out the year, obviously, with our all district visitation day, but later in September, Washington P T O hosted a back-to-school social. Haven't been able to do this for a few years now, so it's great to have parents coming in, getting together, got various activities. Quite a few families came out to participate. There were games in the playground. We had the police department show up with their various dogs. Chaz Wagner came from Indian Ed. We also had North Holmes representation and public health representation there for families and any questions they might have. In October, we again held the Fall Festival. This year, able to do more things in the school, in the gym. We had volunteers coming in, which was great to have and see again. Big life-size games that took place in the gym area and a petting zoo. Llamas, goats, a small donkey. As always, we go through our celebrations for students and staff. Junior Jack of Pride citations have been going out, my newsletters to the social media, good news spotlights, highlighting some of those things. Again, the probably largest number of citations I get are for kids doing things for others, just their kindness, not only with each other, but for staff, just others in the building. It's really heartwarming. On October eighteenth, we celebrated Unity Day. This is an event that our social worker, Lily Kriske, kind of spearheaded for our school. Kindness, inclusion, acceptance. She was able to get into each of the classrooms to teach a lesson and work with them. From that, they all created a mosaic where they had the first letter in their name, kind of torn out of a piece of paper, and she made a mosaic, utilizing our anchor and stronger together message. First-grade staff hosted a pumpkin carving event. It was very well-attended and, again, great to see families coming back in and joining some of the events that have been kind of traditional things and just the smiles and so much fun that the families and staff had on all of these activities and nights that took place. During that time, we also held our book fair. Something a little bit different this year, I shouldn't say different, a different way of approaching it, but our science and STEM, we actually have a room for this this year. Thanks to the early childhood addition, we were able to utilize a classroom that's in the Washington building, where we can actually keep and store a lot of our science warehouse, things from each of the grade levels. And each month, there is a theme. September was apples, October went into pumpkins, but each of them comes up with stations that focus on standards in science. And classes have a chance to sign up multiple times for each month. They're going and utilize the room this coming month. In December, the early childhood classes will also be joining us. Wonder to see how much access was needed and how many times classes were getting in there before we opened it completely up, but I think there's going to be room for everybody to be able to utilize this. Classes get out throughout the year. In the fall, that's one of the favorite times for the kids to get out and a lot of exploration into our school forest. See a lot of artwork with leaf rubbings or leaf mosaics and artwork that decorate our halls, but also the environmental lessons that are taught out there are just really top-notch, and the kids get a great experience being outside, learning. We were blessed this year to receive a very large donation from McDonald's. Many of you may have seen that in Go Heming, social media, Facebook. And I think there was forty-six boxes of, like this wide, this cubes, of all school supplies donated to our school. And we get quite a few of the high school clubs, sports, whatever, coming to the school and donating their time to help out. This happened to be the soccer, boy soccer team that came over to help unpack and organize and sort these multitude boxes. After that, things were dispersed out into the classroom for use. I think out of this donation, we'll probably have pencils that'll scratch in my career, but it was overwhelming. And to see this big semi-truck pulling in and three lift pallets that were taller than me, which, you know, I'm not real tall, but just see Normans being unloaded and transported into our gym where we staged them.
B J, can I ask something about that?
Yes.
Does that help the teachers? You know, you always hear about teachers spending their own money on, you know, supplies and stuff. So does that really help the teachers to not have to spend their own money on school supplies?
Really, the greatest benefit is for the kids.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it must help the teachers in that way.
It does, because at our level, they're very kind-hearted souls.
Yeah.
And nobody wants to see a kid go without.
Right.
And we try and work very hard every year to find ways to supplement things for families that may not be able to get.
Yeah.
We do receive a number of donations every year, but this was a massive donation on top of what we normally receive.
Right. Did our other schools get that too? Did the Greenhaven?
Not the McDonald's one. We've been a part of a program in the past that we received donations from Joam Fabrics.
Yeah.
Because of our free and reduced population.
Yeah.
Numbers, and they donate things basically on a seasonal basis. And all of those items are to be sent out, staff, families, to be able to utilize. So, from that, it had expanded into this as well, but.
Did you have to apply for that McDonald's grant or the McDonald's donation?
Not to the McDonald's.
You didn't do anything?
The, nope.
Oh.
Just based on our history through Joam Fabrics and so forth, this was kind of an offspring of that, but.
That's really nice.
Yeah, very, very much appreciated. And like you said, it's, you know, we, a lot of the supplies were like classroom-type things, might be wipes or dry erase markers. Well, those things directly impact staff. Rings of paper. There was a wide variety.
Wow. Thank you.
So, went over and personally thanked our sponsors for that, through McDonald's and so forth, but the kids also did a big collage thank you to show their appreciation for the donation. As I said earlier, staff are pretty kind-hearted at our level and really want to make sure kids or families are getting things they need. Our staff always focuses on giving back in the community as well. One of the events that will be, that has already begun, but a thankful November, each of the weeks coming up, starting last week, collecting items for the Salvation Army. That last week is cereal, this week is canned foods, next week, boxed food items and so forth. You can see, those will all be donated at the end of the Typically, or I shouldn't say typically, some years we do penny drives and donate the money for a cause. We have events coming up right before winter break where we partner with the police department, and they go in and provide gifts to families as well. And our staff have been doing something similar to that for about five years now. So, last year, I think we impacted thirteen families for the holidays. So, a lot of, a lot of things come in and go out to show gratitude and hopefully warm and help families out that entire need. One of the events this week, started this week, it's the second annual. Needed to find some things to help boost morale a little bit last year, and one of the things that I came up with was a turkey hunt. So, I have little turkey cutouts that I hide throughout the hallways. The staff find those, put their name on them, and then I pick up items to draw and give away as we get closer to the Thanksgiving break. Kind of a fun event. This coming week, they find a turkey and they have to gift that turkey to somebody else or put somebody else's name on it for the drawing. So, it's a way of giving back as well. And just having fun. They employ their students as they go down the hall. All the kids don't miss a beat and are like eagle eyes and find these things everywhere, even as well as I try and hide them. Upcoming events, as we are finishing up now, conferences have been pretty well-attended at the K two. Tonight will be the conclusion of that. Veterans Day is coming up on the eleventh. We will honor that tomorrow in-house, but have put together a slide that will go out to families through Go Heming to show our appreciation to the veterans. This is the year where Lindsay Bajure is, she starts her year at the Greenhavens, so they have a Veterans Day program there this year in the winter program. It's our turn to do the spring program when Lindsay's in the barn building. Chaz Wagner, we've been partnering with him. He's been able to get in about once a month so far into all of the classrooms and provide some Indian education lessons. We have a mini powwow event scheduled for November twenty-third at nine o'clock. That'll be a school assembly in the large gym at Washington. December seventh, through our district wellness committee, we have a sponsor of the event labeled Fidgety Fairy Tales. They will be coming up to the Heming schools and performing for K two school, or K two buildings in the morning and three-sixth in the afternoon in the Lincoln Auditorium. December fourteenth, following up with Chaz, we have traditional Inishonabe, Winter Legends and Storytelling with a special guest. Carrie Drift will be coming in and presenting to our students probably about a twenty, twenty-minute, half-hour program. And that kind of takes us to the winter break, but as you can see, beyond all the wonderful things that they're doing on a daily basis in the classrooms and the wonderful things our students are doing, a lot of opportunities for the kids again. And this is a great start to the year to be able to do all of these things in earnest again. But, any questions? All right. Appreciate your time and thank you for allowing us to skip ahead and get back to conferences.
Looks good.
Thanks, B J.
So we have Mr. Snyder, next, our Assistant High School Principal, and he's going to talk about something that he shared at the board, about a potential proposal to increase our health offerings. So, Mr. Snyder, thank you.
Thank you for having me. First, I'm going to talk about some exciting things that's been happening in the high school first. So, the past couple weeks have really been exciting for our high school students here. We had conferences tonight. We're hoping for a really good turnout. We had conferences last week and the cell towers went down, so numerous phone concerts were, conferences weren't able to happen. And last I checked, still have service. So, that's, that's a positive thing. I know we, we kind of scrambled a little bit when we're trying to message each other, but none of the messages were going through. But, we had a total of five hundred and fifty-nine in-person conferences last week, and we had eight phone conferences before the towers went down. Last week, we had a guest speaker called The Lionheart Experience came in, and he spoke with our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders about school violence, bullying, teen anxiety, depression. He even talked about teacher turnover in schools and issues at home. And his main message to students was trying to teach self-worth. And it was, it was a very valuable and heartfelt experience for our students and staff. I felt we've had a lot of positive feedback from that. We had three hundred and eleven students attend our Fall Ball. The Blue Jacket Cafe is up and running again, and the last Friday before Halloween, we had over seventy students carving pumpkins, playing board games, drinking cider, just having a good time, eating candy, and it was, it was a lot of fun. We got pumpkin guts in the sink a little bit, but luckily we got it all cleaned up before Jimmy got mad at us, so that was, that was a fun time. Our Performing Arts Department's been really busy. Obviously, you noticed, or you know the Prism concert that we had, and I was actually asked to perform in that, so that was kind of fun. As a former band director, it was nice to get my horn out and play with the kids. And I played in a professional jazz band back in Detroit, and I was only able to make two of the performances, and one of the kids says, "You've only had two practices. Do you think you'll be okay for the concert?" I was like, "Yeah, I think I got it. I'll be fine." So, it was fun that they were worried for me, that I only couldn't make two rehearsals. In addition, Bemidji State's Winon Ensemble came in as part of their tour and did concerts for our band students, and it was kind of nice to have this Q and A about what it's like playing music at the next level. And they could ask him anything, you know, "What's the artist's instrument? What's that long red tube over there?" It was a bassoon. A lot of the students had never seen or heard a bassoon before, so that was a really fun experience. The choir students took a chant, a trip down to Chan Hansen to go see Phoos. You know, all these things that normally take place in a normal year, so that's nice to have that happen. Mickey Brown took, took a bunch of students to an active construction site and got to see tradesmen working up close, and I think Mrs. Seckhor was there on site.
Yes, it was our building construction class, so all of the kids were there for the entire day, working as a team to hang the trusses that day, so that's great.
Yeah, it was a really cool experience for them. And then.
Time's up.
Sorry. And then, in December, our, I believe our fifth through eighth graders are going to be taken to a hands-on career fair academy at the Armory, which is going to be exciting for them to start thinking about what they do, what they want to do when they grow up. And every classroom and every program at the high school, there's been exciting things happening at Heming High School, and it's, it's, it's just awesome to see every department go above and beyond and, you know, return us to normal and do those kind of experiences out in the community that have been missing the last few years. And the last thing I'll talk about for the high school is tomorrow, we have a Veterans Day performance at two o'clock in the auditorium, and so we would like to coercionally invite all of you to join us. And I believe Mrs. Seckhor has sent out the program already for all of you, so hopefully we can see you there. And then the last item today is, is the proposal on behalf of our FIED and Health Department. So, there should be a packet in front of you that I included the proposal, a letter of support from teachers, administrators, counselors, and union reps, along with a copy of the Minnesota State Standards and Statutes. And I ask that you please look over the proposal and all the included information that's been provided. And at our next school board meeting, Mr. Pleas is going to make himself available to come in, and he can maybe answer a little bit more specifics in regards to the classes that this would affect with this proposal. And so what we're proposing is that instead of requiring a half-credit of ninth-grade FIED, we'd like to switch that to a half-credit of health for ninth, for our ninth graders, because we feel that there's a lot of topics that need to be discussed at an earlier age. So if we can address those mental health and social emotional needs in the ninth-grade health classes, along with babying and bullying in ninth grade, rather than sprinkling it in our curriculum throughout the rest of the grades, it'll have a much greater impact along with our students. And so, and then in this proposal, we have a rationale of why we want to do it, our procedure and the cost, and a couple options. And we're hoping to implement this for next school year.
Any questions?
On the topic.
I'm just, just going to add that, so, a health credit to graduate is not a Minnesota requirement, and a FIED credit to graduate is not a Minnesota requirement, but this board has chose to have FIED as a requirement to graduate, you know, somewhere between ninth and twelfth grade. So, this would, this proposal not only would be adding that to ninth grade, but they're also suggesting to increase the credits required to graduate from twenty-two and a half to twenty-three. And maybe you guys, or one of you just want to talk briefly about that, you can let the board know that we have plenty of room within that, within the schedule to accommodate that.
Yeah, with our seven-day period, it allows our students to graduate with a maximum of twenty-eight credits. And so, a lot of students are taking year-long study hall or serve as office runners, and so it's not like it'll really negatively affect, they're not going to miss out on many of those opportunities, because since we provided that seven-hour day, there's, there's a lot more space and wiggle room for students to still, still do a study hall or be an office runner, but can get that additional health credit and still take some of the P E that they were hoping to get as well.
So, you mean, are you saying one study hall all year, one hour of study hall all year long, or?
That's what kids are doing.
Yeah, some students do have a study, a study hall all year.
And is that every grade?
Yes.
Every year they have a study hall, all year?
Well, and they don't have to. That's where they, that's where there's opportunity where they could have more electives.
Right. I'd rather them take an elective, to be honest.
Yeah, and so that's why we want to, to push them a little harder. Instead of doing the bare minimum and graduating with twenty-two point five credits.
Yeah.
They have the opportunity to get twenty-eight credits. So, we're asking the board to increase to twenty-three credits.
Okay. Do you have any idea what the surrounding schools up here generally have?
It all depends on their, their, the maximum credit. So, if you only have a six-period date, the highest you could get would be twenty-four.
Okay.
So, and if you have a seven-period date, the highest you could get is twenty-eight.
Is what?
Twenty-eight.
Okay.
And in Bemidji, they have an eight-period day semester system, so they could get thirty-two credits. So, it really, it depends on.
On how many periods you have in the date.
Yes.
So, we could go as high as twenty-eight.
Yes, our kids, our kids could.
And you're asking to go to twenty-three.
Yes. And kids can still go beyond that. Some kids do get twenty-eight credits, but they, they only need the minimum of twenty-two point five right now.
Okay.
And we want it to be twenty-three, so that they get this half-credit of health, they'll still get the credit of FIED, and then have other electives to fill that in.
Yep. Okay.
So, we require a student to at least take a FIED class, correct?
Yep, a year-long.
And now you want us to eliminate that.
No, it would, this would be in addition to.
So, they're not giving them a choice. Do you either L. study or FIED, or are you going to, I still want to get rid of the FIED.
No, we're not getting rid of any FIED.
No, no.
No, it would be in addition, so they still have to, this, this board has made it as a local decision for our district, every student who graduates from Heming High School has to have one full credit of FIED, and that's not going to change. We would like to add that they also are required to have point-five credit of health to graduate.
Because currently, the, the health standards are kind of sprinkled in all the other P E classes.
Like, they might get it in biology, they might get like little smatterings of, of health, but we don't have.
A dedicated class to just the health issues.
And with the mental health stuff going on?
Yes.
I mean, we need to. We, we've been talking about mental health. We've done so much for mental health.
Yes, they get it in seventh grade.
Yeah.
But the state says you should have health at least once.
Yeah.
In between ninth and twelfth.
Between ninth and twelfth. We don't have it at all.
And we don't have health.
Director Kim?
We're requiring it for ninth graders. It's not optional sometime between ninth and twelve. We want our ninth graders.
We want to put it in ninth grade, because that's where it makes sense.
Yep. No, I agree. I totally agree.
Yeah.
And then if we, so, I think what, Mike, what you're saying is what we would be doing to, as a cost kind of savings or no cost to the district except for curriculum, if we replace the ninth-grade FIED, instead of having ninth-grade FIED, they would have ninth-grade health, but they would still have the other FIED electives. So, strength and conditioning, fitness zone, aquatics.
Only if they take it.
Team and lifetime.
Only if they take that, right?
They have to take.
Oh, they have?
They have to take two gym classes between ninth and twelfth grade.
Yeah, so instead of just having to take ninth-grade P E, you might not get your P E credit until eleventh grade, and you want to do weightlifting instead. So, that kind of gives a little bit more freedom for the students.
Say that again, please.
So, instead of like a student taking, like having to take ninth-grade P E, they might take weightlifting eleventh grade, and that would be their P E credit.
I thought you said they need a full year of the game. Is weightlifting a full year?
No.
No.
Our classes are semester. So.
Right.
So, you have a semester of like strength and conditioning and a semester of fitness zone, or you can take two semesters of, of strength and conditioning.
Yeah.
Because that's a repeat class.
And I just feel as though when we went for the six to seven-hour day, we wanted to be able to offer more to our students. So, I feel as though, yes, for some students, being a study hall is important, but I think we need to offer our students more. And I just feel as though, mental health, socially, emotional, if we can, I mean, like, if we could have it at seventh grade or sixth grade or fifteen.
Well, they do. So, we have, every seventh grader has seventh-grade health with Mr. Pleas for an entire semester. And so, that's great. And that, that's required, or you know, it's a state statute that middle school has some kind of health. And we should also be providing some kind of a health class for ninth through twelfth, so.
And the other thing, just important, you know, in their proposal, this isn't like an aha to, you know, next year's eleventh grader, that now they somehow have to get a half-credit of health. This would take effect and only be in effect for incoming ninth graders next year, so then they'd have time to plan and schedule. So, there's no aha moment for our current students.
Right. So, it would be the class of twenty-twenty-seven who would need the twenty-three credits.
But if a student decided not to take FIED at ninth grade, he can take a weightlifting in eleventh grade to replace it, and then we consider weightlifting a FIED class?
Yes, we do. All of, so, yes, all of our FIED classes are considered FIED classes.
Well, it's, it's better probably that we require FIED in ninth grade and the health. Probably that's the best thing, right? If we can afford.
I just don't want to see a student miss out on FIED.
I know, exactly. Not with all the weight pros.
We've had the argument of years.
Yeah.
So, this will be brought back to us then for.
Yeah.
Yes, so you'll have time to, you'll have time to ponder, ask questions. We will be back. Carrie McDonald and James Pleas want to be here in December to address any questions and.
Sure. So, I would, I would most likely, on, on the next agenda, if the board is in favors, to have, have the question or motion that we would require point-five health course for incoming ninth graders and then increase our credits from twenty-two and a half to twenty-three.
Right.
And then you can, you can make a decision if that's, throughout your book.
Okay, now, with these options, option one and option two, option one is adding staff, correct?
Yeah, that's, you know.
That's adding staff.
That's shooting for the moon.
That's shooting for the moon.
But knowing that it's.
That's the perfect scenario for us.
Yes, it's, it's tough right now, and we understand that. And, and we know that, like, if this is approved, if we move to that at a later date, if we do registration and we have high enrollments and we have lots of kids signing up for all these gym classes, and we get an influx of, of kids who need adaptive FIED, then we can move to that if we need to, but.
Right.
So you're not asking to do that right now?
Well.
Or you are? In the perfect world, right? Shooting for the moon, right?
If we, if, if one of us had bought that ticket in California last year.
Right. Yes.
Then absolutely.
Okay. And then second, under the option two, who would teach them? I mean, if option one is hiring someone, option two is just being creative and doing overload or?
Yep, the FIAED department, well, without even an overload. The FIAED department has figured out how, who would teach what. They all have their various licenses. And so they have hammered that out of what they would, what they would do and when they would teach that.
Oh. So in essence, that's not costing us anything in FIAED personnel.
Right, it's just, it would be the curriculum, because we'd have to get some, you know, really good materials and, and scope and sequence of what should be taught and a textbook, probably.
One of, like, one of the downsides of option two is we only have two licensed health teachers in the building. So then we'll be taking a couple FIAED classes from that person while they're teaching health in its place. So that might mean, you know, less students that semester are taking. That's why with option one, it would be nice to hire somebody that's licensed in health and FIAED or DAE so that they could take some of the brunt and not feel like we're shifting a PE class to a health class. And then also, you know, it could help us bring back aquatics as well, because everybody's kind of stretched to the limit on the amount that they can teach already. And a lot of it comes down to licensure.
We don't have aquatics at all?
We offer it and then it goes by the draw. So this year only nine kids signed up for it, so we didn't offer it. There were more kids that signed up for strength and conditioning, team and lifetime sports. But if that were to change, especially now that the pools are open, we have, kids are seeing that their friends are being paid to be lifeguards, they maybe will want to take that class.
Be nice to offer.
Yes, so I mean, we always put it out there at registration and then, and then we go by the, the numbers.
That would help the swimming situation in this town.
Right. So hopefully you have enough information here to look over and again, we're always available for more questions.
What is the?
Adaptive FIAED.
Yeah, adaptive FIAED.
So would it be difficult if we started with option two and just gauged interest and then, you know, at some point would it be difficult to then move to option one if, if somebody wants to?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, that would be a great transition if we, if we can show the numbers and we have, you know, higher enrollment or we have money, funding available.
By that, they will have some more budget information too, so.
Right.
We start first with that and then we can always update.
I think the other thing that's just important to note, that this isn't, this isn't a top down proposal, this was our FIAED and health staff coming to administration with this idea. So this isn't something that administration's trying to force on staff, this is something that staff recognizes the need and they're looking for a way to solve it.
They actually brought it to me last year, but it was after we'd already started the registration materials and updated the course catalog. So I got it in December, January and it was, it was too late to implement at that time.
And the, yeah, the reason why we're bringing it now and why the timeline is where it is is because we're hoping that this is something that we can offer next year for our students and we want to get into our course catalogs and starting to make schedules, schedules here in December.
Might there be grant funding for a class like this, you know, for social, emotional, mental health?
Possibly.
So something that we got started and then we looked at to fund option one?
Possibly.
I sure appreciate the way this is put together and the thoughtfulness and options. So thank you.
Thank you. It was a collaborative effort and I think the department, sitting down and getting to talk with just each department, like you said, Farah and I have been doing the past few weeks, has been really great to just hear the specific and unique needs of that department as opposed to like a whole staff meeting where everybody only gets a little bit to talk. I mean, some of these department meetings have gone like two hours plus and we're like, hey, we should, we should get home, we've got families. So it's really great to hear, you know, the ideas and, and the experiences of, of all the staff here in the building. And I, I think it's great that it's teacher led and they want, they want to make things better for our students here in Hiving and have known that we've been doing a disservice to them for, for quite some time. So I'm hoping we can make some improvements for our students moving forward.
Can I clarify one more question? With the aqua, when you say aquatics, that we don't offer aquatics right now, you mean any pool class? Or are you talking adaptive aquatics?
No, no, no. In seventh and eighth grade, Mr. Wojkowski does a unit where the kids swim. And that was put on the, that was put on hold during COVID and that's going to be, that's going to be back in now we have lifeguards, so they're going to start that probably next month.
And that's required or?
Yeah, it's, it's part of theirs, of their.
FIAED?
FIAED. So in eighth grade, and I think maybe even some seventh graders, they get, they get that.
They get that. So like one unit within the FIAED of swimming?
Yes. And then, but if you, as an elective, you can sign up for aquatics and take that class. We just don't have that class this year because we didn't have enough kids sign up for it.
When you said aquatics, you just mean swim, a swimming class?
Yes.
Okay, you're not talking adaptive aquatics?
No. That does, so Woj is the adaptive FIAED teacher and they swim two days a week, I believe, with, with all of those students.
With the adaptive?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just like weightlifting is one option for their, would be 10 through 12 FIAED, aquatics is another option.
Yes, and that would be, that's nine through 12. So we do have FIAED electives that are nine through 12.
Yeah, yeah. Do we have outdoor education, by the way?
What do you mean, outdoor education?
Camping, fishing, hunting, that kind of stuff?
Um, not right now.
I wish that we would develop that type of class.
We had an outdoor, last year Deb Len Gang, he had an outdoor biology class and they did maple syrupine and they went out to Kerry Lake and they did all kinds of outdoor things. I don't know if they went camping, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
First now.
So there are a number of items in personnel today and I've been practicing all the, but I'm not saying that I'm not going to make some errors, so bear with me, yes. Item A is a motion to approve the hiring of Amelia Daigle to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, Lincoln Elementary, effective November 14th, 2022.
Support. Move by Director Martin, supported by Director Polter, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried, thank you.
Item B is a motion to approve the hiring of Michelle Finfinger to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, high school, effective November 14th, 2022.
Move.
Support.
Move by Director Polter, supported by Director McGloughlin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried, thank you.
Item C is a motion to approve the hiring of Angela Sunquist to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, high school, effective November 14th, 2022.
So move. Support.
Move by Director McGloughlin, supported by Director Nyberg, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried, thank you.
Item D is a motion to approve the hiring of Becky Ivansa to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, Washington Elementary, effective November 14th, 2022.
So move.
Move by Director Martin, supported by Director McGloughlin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried, thank you.
Item E is a motion to approve the hiring of Lindsay Snow to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, Washington Elementary, effective November 14th, 2022.
So move.
Move by Director McGloughlin, supported by Director Nyberg, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried, thank you.
Item F is a motion to approve the hiring of Maggie Iverson to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, Greenhaven Elementary, effective November 14th, 2022.
So move.
Move by Director Martin, supported by Director McGloughlin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried, thank you.
Item G is a motion to approve the hiring of Lisa Sorensen to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, Greenhaven Elementary, effective November 14th, 2022.
So move.
Move by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Polter, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried, thank you.
Item H is a motion to approve the hiring of Abby McDonald to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, high school, effective November 14th, 2022.
So move. Support.
Move by Director Martin, supported by Director McGloughlin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried, thank you.
Item I is a motion to approve the hiring of Kelly Clagio to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, Lincoln Elementary, effective November 15th, 2022.
So move. Support.
Move by Director McGloughlin, supported by Director Nyberg, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
For the record, we're about halfway through personnel, just for the.
Either our new posting or these covered under our budget?
Uh, that, well, so all of these PSA hires are related to students that have moved into our district and require pupil support assistance in their IEP. So I think Mr. Letzka sent you out a little summary. That was, that's part of the issue is special education funding is not fully funded. That's what that whole cross subsidy conversation was. So is it, is it budgeted for? No. Is it fully funded? No. Is it something that we're required to provide? Yes. So we, we will have to make adjustments in other areas or hope that, you know, we get some additional funding through the legislature here in this upcoming session.
It's like these unfunded mandates. It would come out of the general fund.
It would, yes. Any, any, any overlap or anything that we're under would, would come out of the general fund or potentially our fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
We got an email that talks about we get reimbursed 55 to 60% for special ed including PSA, so.
Hopefully we get it.
No, we get that.
We get that. We get it, but we don't know for.
Right.
Yeah, right. There was, there was language to, to not even fully fund the cross subsidy, but to give a higher percentage, like to get it up near 70% rather than 50%. And that was in the legislature last year and had support and just, it didn't happen. But we're, our, my superintendent's group is just pushing to fully fund special education. The cross subsidy is just a counter product of not funding it in the first place.
Comes up every year, you see. Hopefully with this thing.
What about that extra COVID money you were talking about at one time? Didn't we, didn't we get some money that could be used towards these PSAs maybe?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, so we, you know, we've used up probably the majority of, well over half of our COVID money just on other expenses related to the pandemic. We're sitting on about three and a half million dollars of SR3 money that can be used for things like smaller class sizes to hire staff. So our plan was to, to backfill some of that loss that we had during COVID with, with those SR dollars. But again, when those SR dollars are gone, yeah, the end of fiscal year 2024, that's when we'd have to make some of these decisions about, are we going to continue to fund intervention to some of the other mental health supports that we have? Because there won't be funding for that once this SR money is gone.
Okay, so what is the answer? We can use the SR money to fund?
Yes, yes, we can, yeah.
Okay.
We can use it for general fund expenses related to smaller class sizes and learning loss and a whole bunch of different categories.
So then actually it doesn't come out of our general fund or is the SR money in the general fund or?
It, it would be something that we would pull to cover shortfalls.
Okay.
To, and we, again, we're down, you know, we bounced back somewhat, but we're still probably down 200 students from where we were prior to COVID.
Full of?
Yes, yeah. We bounced back, we've got probably about 35 to 40 kids back this year. But again, we're down and everybody around us is in a situation. So we, you know, that's again, you know, like we talked about before, we're kind of kicking this can down the road. So those, those hard questions are going to be coming soon if we don't get some additional funding.
From the life stage.
We know if any of the other schools in the district are getting more kids that need the pupil assistant as much as we're getting here?
So just regionally, bed numbers are going through the roof. The average in our area is 23% of our students are identified as special education students. And that's up from, I'd say about 10 years ago, it was probably 15%, 15 to 16%.
What's driving that?
I, I don't know. You know, there's.
Are we defining the criteria to be qualified to start live?
I agree, you know, there, there, I think there's lots of reasons why.
That's, that's almost fourth of our students are being specialized services.
ADHD is a, is a qualifying disability, so you know, we have lots of students that have been identified as having ADHD. Autism is on the rise, a lot of our students are on the spectrum.
They don't all require?
They don't all require IEPs, no, but, but some do. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a burning question and it's something that, you know, we're lobbying hard for because it's, you know, it's at the expense of all of our students, right? I mean, if, if we're required by law to fund these positions and provide these services, but we don't get the reimbursement like Nathan shared with you, 50 to 55% reimbursement, all that falls on the back of school districts to, to find a way to pay for it.
Yeah, because it affects the other students. We might not get some extra thing because we have to spend all the money on the special ed, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
What would happen if we didn't get more funding?
Then we probably wouldn't have a school district.
It's a terrible.
Yep, yep. Yep, yep. Okay, page two.
Item J.
Okay, item J. Motion to approve the hiring of James Please as a ninth grade boys' basketball coach effective November 21st, 2022.
So move.
Support. Move by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Polter, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried, thank you.
Item K is a motion to approve the hiring of Todd Bigelow as junior varsity boys' basketball coach effective November 21st, 2022.
So move.
Support. Move by Director Martin, supported by Director Polter, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried, thank you.
Item L is a motion to approve the hiring of Kathleen Bra as the eighth grade boys' basketball coach effective November 21st, 2022.
So move. Support.
Move by Director McGloughlin, supported by Director Martin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried, thank you.
Item M is a motion to approve the hiring of Slade Rivecheck as a junior varsity girls' wrestling coach effective November 21st, 2022.
So move. Support.
Move by Director Martin, supported by Director Nyberg, any discussion? Girls' wrestling is something that's relatively new. That's on my IQ, I thought.
Yes, so Mr. Mr. Turner was here, you know, I don't know when it was, maybe six months ago, seven months ago.
Oxford actually has a whole girls' wrestling team that I believe Kaia, is it Kaia Rybichek's on now?
Yes, so Mr. Turner was here and presented and, and we talked about, we also had drawing a blank on his name, the boys' coach that was here. Um, he, he spoke to the board. Pierce, Mr. Pierce, yes. And, um, so we have, when I talked to Mr. Turner the other day, uh, we have about fifteen girls that have signed up um, and are interested in girls' wrestling. So again, I think it's just a good opportunity for our kids to.
And this will be during winter sports season?
Correct.
Nashville also has a very good girls' turnout for, uh, K through six wrestling.
Awesome.
Now that the, the wrestling program throws out our boys' girls, equal.
Title.
Yeah.
Oh, so, so I, I did that report for many years, the report that Mr. Turner has to do. And as long as you're just upfront and say that you have what, what you have and, and that you have coaching staff available, the title right piece is basically just a form, a formality.
With all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item N is a motion to approve the hiring of Chastity Platt as junior varsity assistant girls' wrestling coach, effective November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Director Poulter, supported by Director Martin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item O is a motion to approve the following teachers to serve a two-year term as department chair, beginning with the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Social studies Susan Schwartz, special education Lenora Jensen, student services counseling, career academy social worker, Mr. Hints. Art, theater, music, Mr. Sikora. English, library, languages, Ms. Ronning. Facts, industrial technology, Ms. Trimmer. Math, that's a misspelling there, it should be an E, uh, Ms. Nicole Anderson. Uh, science, Mr. Carl Sanis. Physical education, Mr. Wojcicki.
Support.
Moved by Director Poulter, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion?
Is, is this the thing that's allowing, uh, like the health in grade nine to come forward?
It, it could, yes, because these department chair meetings will be held at least every month and, and people can bring up their agenda items and we can discuss it as departments. So one of the topics would be, um, course catalog and updating our courses.
So it's a good opportunity for teachers to feel they have more input?
Yes.
And this was an MOU that we, I believe we approved at the last board meeting, Mr. Poulter? So this, this is just the next step of that process.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item P is a motion to accept the resignation from Sean Howard as head football coach, effective November second, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Director Poulter, supported by Director Martin. Any discussion?
I'd just like to take an opportunity to thank Coach Howard. It's not all his fault that we don't have successful football.
Absolutely.
I'm sure that talking to our A D and stuff that they're gonna work on, so. Yeah, thank him for his time and his effort.
Absolutely.
Thanks for the comments there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item Q is a motion to accept the resignation for purposes of retirement of Vincent Monticelli, Jr., custodian supervisor engineer, Lincoln Elementary, effective December thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Martin. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, Vidit is a great guy, wondering if ever, he's, um, a real positive to the district. And, um, I just want to thank him personally for the services he's provided to, you know, just a great employee, a very close person to him.
Thank you. We'll give that letter out to.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
I don't touch it in stone, because he's been there that long.
Think he grew up in homemade for some purpose, though. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
One?
You're gonna vote no?
Yes.
You vote no? Wait, can you go? Vote no?
Yes.
Okay.
What's it?
Let the record.
Vote no.
No, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Hold it then, discuss that with the retiring. Motion carried. Thank you.
Why don't you read that one here?
Item R is a motion to accept the resignation for purposes of retirement of Deanna Lynn Holm, public school mayor, district wide, effective January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
So moved, support.
Moved by Director Martin, supported by Director McGloughlin. Excuse me. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
If I could just thank, personally thank Deanna for the work she did during the COVID fiasco. And I know she put in significant amount of hours off the clock for what she did. And just obviously thank you for pulling this district through that.
And just keeping track of all the changes that were coming down as we were learning about it was absolutely amazing.
It was a huge job and you did it very well. Thank you so much.
And I just want to echo what everybody said. We couldn't have done it without you. I mean, you really kept us on track and kept our kids and our staff as healthy as we could. So thank you.
We gave us direction at the time we needed it, so thanks.
I just want to add too that Deanna and I really spent a lot of time together. I'm, I'm gonna miss her. Because we, we spent a lot of time together, uh, talking and strategizing and going over plans and I'm just, I'm gonna miss her. She's, uh.
I'll send you an email.
Are you available as a consultant?
Yeah.
Deanna, we have some pictures to fill. Do we have some that can be filled in?
So there was some interviews that happened last week. I don't think anything was finalized yet, but we did have some interviews last week, so.
And I was with existing.
And, and I looked, I interviewed, I think, three or four people, some, some in, some out, something.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we've already covered administrative reports. We'll move to the meet administrative business and turn that over to Sir Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome.
Item A is a motion to approve payment number two to Field Turf USA in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-six cents for work completed on the cheaper field turf.
So moved, support.
Moved by Director McGloughlin, supported by Director Martin. Any discussion?
I think, is this last day now?
I don't think so.
I was over there last week, I was gonna touch it on it, just the, the track, the track surface. And it was two guys that came in and put all the striping on it and it looks like wild, it's like, it was like putting a picture frame on a picture. It just, it's amazing.
So it's gonna, it's done?
It, yes. I, I don't think they've done their final walkthrough yet where they're gonna do their punch list and Tyler says, you know, here's something that we should address or. I don't think that's happened yet, but it's, it's basically done.
I talked to Tyler that they want to use over there sometime. There was one little piece that didn't get goofed on properly, they're coming back for messing up.
Sure.
Hopefully I'll watch her before we get her six hundred this year.
Yeah. Hopefully it's done today and not tomorrow.
I think there's one or two more.
Yeah, they're probably.
It looks like, like seventy, almost seventy-four thousand.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item B, uh, a motion to adopt the resolution for supporting district application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation for the High School Activities Department to use the Minnesota State High School League for being grant funding to offset financial reductions that have provided for the free and reduced lunch students giving high school.
So moved.
Moved by Director Poulter, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion?
You know, this whole state high school league for profit and then having a foundation, I, I can't not support what they're doing, but boy.
Well, this is a good thing, this thing.
Well, this is, but how they get there and it involves state statute, it's unbelievable.
I think we're under a lot of pressure and I think they still are, just because of the things that you had said.
Are they for profit, you say?
Change is slow.
The high school league is for profit.
High school league is a for-profit?
You bet.
That's strange.
All the, all these tournaments that they do are for profit.
I never thought that. What do you mean? The, you mean the state tournaments?
Yeah, the foundation is their nonprofit arm.
Okay.
And they move some money to it to, to be able to subsidize this, but the whole thing just seems.
Take a look at MSHL executives, see if they can.
Do they get paid a lot?
Yeah.
So it sounds like another trip for Lackett?
Hmm.
This kind.
But we have no choice.
Right.
We have no choice. And if you go to these state tournaments, you know, there's certain places that sell the sweatshirts and the T-shirts and.
Well, you can't play the state tournament if you're at the Indiana, and you have to join in in order to play them.
Just to play the ticket and you have to buy those sweatshirts and T-shirts from that vendor that they have, but super expensive. You know, yeah.
You can discuss that at the service co-op, because there's a board member from Wasabi East who's a member of the service co-op and I tell him every time I discuss that, it goes around the table, everybody's in the same, different districts or.
Feel the same way.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's so big and it's in state statute that, that there's no way you can get out of it. But it just doesn't seem right that how, how the taxpayer dollars integrate with the support group and the activities dollars.
It's sad that athletic programs have to suffer in the.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's right. Exactly.
Okay, well, we'll keep. Fun one, thing.
Or fun one.
Yeah, hopefully you can come up with some good news on your side.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item C is a motion to adopt a resolution for supporting American Rest and Plan Act Grant Agreement, five seventy-seven, one Y, between County of St. Louis and giving the public schools, the head school district number seven oh one.
So moved, support.
Moved by Director McGloughlin, supported by Director Martin. Any discussion?
Yeah. I would just like to thank our St. Louis county commissioners for supporting this initiative and supporting our school district. It's huge. So to Commissioner Jugovic, our county commissioner, and then the balance of the board. This is very kind and generous support of our school. So thank you, Deanna.
So that just, uh, this is probably been a year and a half long process, um, lots of conversations. Um, Alex and I attended a St. Louis county board meeting and where, where was that at, Alex? Somewhere down by Cromwell. Yeah, somewhere down by Cromwell. Um, and so it, it's kind of a, the, the conclusion of a very long and drawn out process, but I just couldn't be more grateful to the county commissioner Jugovic and commissioner Nelson also was very active in promoting it. So, um, it's huge. Quarter of a million dollars, uh, set aside for our district to help us offset the costs of some of these construction projects that we've recently had, which is awesome.
Thank you.
One last thing I thought I could compliment. Mr. Aldridge should be awarded a contract out with the city for the memorial building, a three-year contract. And we're not, we're, I think we're at a good spot.
Well, so we have, we have one year agreement and that'll be coming here to the board, um, I think at the next meeting. Um, I think they're approving it first and then it's coming our way. Uh, but it's a one-year agreement and, um,
And they only have, they have all the others, they have a three-year.
And their plan is, yes, they wanna, they wanna meet again in February and, and talk about a three-year plan.
Maybe if a member's still a little off. You're done.
Yep, absolutely.
Was the rate of prices issue?
No, separate issue from what I just said.
From the reservation?
Yes, absolutely separate, yes.
But, no, no, they're not raising prices or?
Um, prices did go up a little bit, but some of that was, um, something that we had agreed to, like for instance, the, the use of the memorial building parking lot for our students to park there. They had just been covering all the plowing costs and, and I, I felt that was, you know, that's our responsibility, our students park there. So, um, we did get a little bit of an increase there. Um, some of the rates increased, hourly rates for field use. But then also, um, when the city uses our facilities, we increase the rates, so it's pretty much a wash when it comes out at the end.
We can discuss that when it comes up, because the current club uses it, the service quarters use the parking lot, so it should be.
Yep, yep. It, it was a, it was a, a very fair agreement, so.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. That was the item nine. Any discussion?
No, the only thing, I think we, we should just touch base, I mean, you, um, the board had asked, uh, Alex and the business office, um, just to kind of give their thoughts on the agreement with the, with the business services of the Chisholm. And I think they've reached some conclusion. I'll let Alex talk to that.
Sure, I'll, I'll keep it brief, but I, I met, I sat down with Amy, Jackie, Pam, and just kind of a self-evaluation of what we think. And, uh, we had a good and thoughtful conversation, you know, girls and college, and we all know the result of, of Chisholm. Go with us, thank you. Um, and the general consensus was, you know, we put all this work in, in year one, worked really hard. And now, and then they're starting to, you know, work a little slower. And, um, we, we have some ownership of it now. We have developed some relationships and, um, I guess we, we felt that it's at least fair to all parties to at least get through the school year, um, and then maybe look at it again, just to, just because, you know, it's fair to their staff, it's fair to us here that are kind of developing the system. So I, the consensus was, um, we want to keep working with them, I just kind of, but it's, it's open for discussion.
Well, that's good. And if anything comes up that you shouldn't, feel free to bring it to the board, anything, because we have, what, sixty days?
It's, yeah, sixteen hours by either party to.
So that's a good thing that it's working also for us.
Alex, with the referendum passing, does that create a bigger burden on you, or I should say, what sort of burden does it create on you?
That is a concern I had and I shared with them. They're, everyone's very helpful and hardworking and they said, well, what if we were, talked about our workflow? What can I do that frees up more time? They're very generous in that way. That is a concern for sure. Um, I think I asked, uh, Mr. Norman what the timeline was. He said, open, opening in the fall of twenty twenty-five. So it's quite a ways.
Time to take it more.
So it's not gonna be like all of a sudden we're in a middle construction project? I mean, it's coming. But, um, it's not gonna be in the next six months. I mean, they're gonna be planning and discussing, but, but that is something we'll keep in consideration.
But not a huge extra burden upfront and like pre-design and bidding and?
There, there would be some. I, I don't, it, it depends on who's assigned to do what with it, how much they want to pay involved.
So let me, let me rephrase it again. In our contract, we have certain things that we agreed to do. Does managing a construction project or pre-design come over and above what we've included in our contract?
That's up to them to do that. That's their responsibility.
But I'm just saying, we have a contract where we agreed to do certain things.
They're calling it.
Yes. But if this is over and above that, do we, I mean, is, is there addition, are there additional charges for additional time, Alex's, that it might take? I don't know, just a thought. And, and I would have to dig up that contract, because if I remember, there were certain things like.
There was night of life.
Payroll, there was. Envoicing, there was. So it might be something where just.
I think work that works. If you've got an issue, bring it to the board.
I'm gonna ask a board member, I'd like to see us decide on the first of the year whether or not we're gonna give them a sixty-day notice or if we're gonna speak with them. And we don't have to worry about construction stuff, extra work or, or Alex. And that'll give us two months to figure out if we want to continue this or if we want to cut, cut our ties and give them our sixty-day notice.
Yeah, I think that, so I was, I'm part of the conversation today with the ladies in the office and Alex. And I think, you know, they're, what they, what they feel, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but they feel like they put all this labor and effort in the upfront to get things to run smoothly. And now they're just, you know, starting to run smoothly and you got a system in place, you created forms, you created protocols, procedures. They're like, maybe let us reap the rewards a little bit now that we've kind of, the hard work is done. So that's where they were hoping, maybe we get to the end of the school year and reevaluate. But again, that's, that's a, that's a board's call too, with what direction you want to go, so.
They're pretty much decided, I, I'm, I'm an advocate for, let's try to do what we can to help each other out, but now I'm worried about, let's take care, take care of giving, take care of our school. And if we're putting an extra burden on our business manager because of extra work, we're going for another district. I think it's a board's responsibility to take a look at whether or not we want to continue to do that.
Yep.
That's what I'm gonna ask at the first of the year, this board deciding if we want to continue or if we continue, we give them our notice in twenty twenty-five or whatever it is they want.
Well, we have to rely on what they tell us. Otherwise we're micromanaging or what if, bring, bring it to the board and give us updates and see if they're, you know.
Right.
It's not gonna fall all at the same time either. It'll be a gradual thing if it does. So we should be able to keep our, again, coming.
From my, my perspective as a board person, I, I think we've tried to collaborate so much and there's been nothing that's come our way at all. They haven't been willing to talk about it. And it's just, it's, um, I don't know.
Can I make a comment about that?
Yeah.
Perfect, perfect entry. I talked to one of their board members personally at a Halloween party. For quite, quite a while. Perfect, perfect entry. I talked to one of their board members personally at a Halloween party for quite, quite a while, and, um, she said she has not once seen anything about Hiving wanting to work with Chisholm on one agenda ever at the Chisholm school boards.
What do you think about the business thing, William?
Well, she knows about that, but she said as far as our board, our board feeling that Chisholm just has shut the door on us, and they just want, you know, to send their kids to our sports and that kind of thing, and, and that, and we kind of all feel, I think, that Chisholm doesn't really. They didn't want to talk about consolidation at all, or building a school together, you know, a junior high or anything like that, okay? And I've gotten that message strong from, I don't know who, I don't know, but she said that's absolutely not true. I've never, she said, I've never heard one word at our, at a meeting about Hiving, doing anything with Hiving, or that Hiving wants to work with us. She said, that's news to me that Hiving would like to work with us. Yeah, she said, that's news to me.
You've had how many meetings for a while with Nashwauk, and, and that was the whole goal, is to try and establish that we're in a conversation that's that goal.
And we were, yeah. You, you talked to Nashwauk, you talked to Chisholm, you said, and that's the message we got back.
And I mean, it's board chair twice a month.
Now she's saying, she's saying something completely different.
I talked with them twice a month on stuff like that.
What?
I talked with their board chair twice a month on stuff like that.
Okay, well, does he say, he said it's never, she said it's never been on our agenda ever. And she goes, this is the first I've heard of it.
To bring something up, if you want to, you know, what he, he said they, yeah, somebody's.
I, I don't know, I was, I was blown away. I couldn't believe it.
Yeah, because their chair and I talked a lot of time on it, and he said there's, we're glad with the business deal, and we're trying, he said they're trying to look for some other stuff that we could throw at us.
Well, some other stuff, what, that they could buy from Hiving?
No, that they, we could, next step in the collaborations.
Yeah, but they don't ever want to come with us.
Well, that's not our fault, whoever you talk to, we talk about it all the time.
Wait, they don't ever want to come with us is the message I've got, is that they would never send their high school kids to this building.
Not unless it's, uh, I don't even care if you say that. It's to both parties' advantage.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that they're, you know, we had, we've had talk about, you know, let's build a junior high together between Chisholm and Hiving, or even in Chisholm. You know, let them keep their elementarys, let us keep our elementarys, let their high school kids come here. And that's what I thought, I mean, that's what I thought we've been talking about. And we've always thought Chisholm was against that completely.
Be in the minutes and it's on TV, you know, we're discussing it, we're wide open to it, so I don't know where.
Well, she doesn't watch our meetings, and she said it's never been on her agenda, so, yeah. I couldn't believe it.
Is she, is it, is it a school board member that took office after these meetings? Because we have, I've been involved in two of those meetings at, in, in their boardroom.
I know.
We've been involved at least in one or two in a public venue before the pandemic started.
And they were not wanting to work with us, right, or?
Well, and I think I've read in the paper that people in their public meetings most recently have asked if they've explored options with neighboring districts and, I don't think.
I don't know, I just wanted to get that out there because I couldn't believe what I was hearing. That's all.
Wasn't there even a session that the facilitator was hired to try and bid this collaboration?
Yes. Right. Yeah.
I just want to make it clear, I'm not trying to say we isolate ourselves here, but.
No, I know.
I want what's best for this district, for the, for the community, and if we can work with someone, that, that's fine, but I'm not taking my ball, I'm going home and saying, I don't want to talk to anybody. But I, I really feel, and maybe some of these other members don't feel the same way, that we're not getting, taken advantage of because we're getting paid for the work that Alex does. But on the other hand, it sounds like we've straightened out a mess that they had, and we made it more organizational, and now, yeah, I, I guess I ask it though, that we take away that, because I, I, why should we continue to do it? I mean, it's just.
More beneficial to them than it is.
Correct.
It's not beneficial to us at all.
For the tip from the money part.
My opinion is this, first and foremost, we have to think about the kids, and I mean the collective, we, all of our school boards, right? So they can build a new building, and I hope they find funds to continue offering curriculum, and I'm relieved that we can expand our curriculum, right? And I for one, never want to see Chisholm without a school building, and how novel would it be if we could work together and have a middle school, right? And, and I look at it like this. I feel like as a community, if you had a junior high over there, right, like, kids aren't driving yet. So there's many times I think about going to Chisholm and going shopping at one of their stores, right, but you have to sort of be intentional about it. If we brought our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders over there, think about how much traffic, how much more traffic that would bring into their community, would parents have to go over and pick them, pick their kids up for a dentist appointment, or pick their kids up after school, or whatever. I, and I just think overall, it's the kids that are suffering.
I understand that, but the problem I, if what I see is that, we, we've been for years since I've been on this board.
Yep.
We've been bending over backwards to try to make an accessible program for them to come be with us. Now we, we go over here to the, to the west.
West, yes.
We've built another new school.
Yeah.
We've talked about dealing with them.
Yeah.
And we pretty much got the door closed in the face of that too. So we're on this little island on our own here, and, and again, I think we need to take care of what we can do here. We offer a great curriculum, we have a great school, and that's the thing that we need to push so that people know it, and they can decide for themselves, but they want to, it's open and roaming, you can go anywhere you want. I mean, it's not like you're bound to that, to that school, so, um.
I agree with Mike.
This, this board, this board has done a lot, you know, with our, our new athletic facility, with the football field, uh, the early childhood center, and that's going to draw people from other districts here. And I think we need to concentrate on what we can do to make Hiving better instead of worrying about what we can do to make Chisholm better or Nashwauk better.
Or either of them to come with us.
If I get trouble for that one, I'm sorry.
You're not going to.
No, I, I'm, I'm excited about what I hear from the principals of what's going on, and that reflects back directly on the leader that we have here as a superintendent, and that's our number one job, is to have good administration and leadership in place, and, and the things we've heard this fall have been the most exciting of any time I've ever been on this board.
Yeah, right.
I, I would just say too that, in particular, the way that the question was posed to the Chisholm voters and what they passed. I don't believe any of those options that you've been talking about, Kathy, with the shared bills. I don't think that's even on the table, the way that their voters.
Right. It's not on the table, and she had, she had never heard one word about it being on the table.
I don't even think they could alter that at this point to say, now I've changed their mind voters, we're going to take that money and we're going to build a middle school.
A middle school, yeah.
You know, I don't even think that's an option. That could be wrong.
I think you're right, she said the same thing, because I said, could we, if your referendum passes, could we change around what you're going to do? She said she didn't think so.
Because they were specific about which plan they were approving and which building was going to be closed and what, it was very specific, so.
You know, and I think our board has also think about all our sports we offer, because we all know we offer a million sports in Hiving, okay? And they're going to keep asking us to co-op with the sports, and are we good with that, or? I mean, I don't want to deny any of these Chisholm kids to play hockey or something, I really don't, but they sure do use us when they need us. That's, it's just a feeling I have.
Well, if we can be good enough, maybe they'll just come.
Well, if the student wants to come play hockey here, all they gotta do is enroll in the school. Not like they gotta go to Chisholm and play hockey here, come over here, go to school there, play hockey here.
But they don't, but they don't, they just want, they want to stay in Chisholm but play hockey here, and that just kind of grinds me a little, you know? And I don't know, it's going to keep going on for eternity, I'm sure.
In the same token, I don't want to, or our athletes, right, like, do we, I'm sure probably Mr. Turner has something, but do we have an inventory by sport that says, okay, here's the number of athletes that we have that are Hiving High School athletes playing girls hockey, and then here's the number that we get from our non-public schools, here's what we get from neighboring communities? I'd be curious to see that, because I feel like now, I mean, with the addition of wrestling, I'm sitting here going, okay, is that going to hurt, you know, our girls' basketball program? Is that going to hurt our girls' hockey program?
Yeah.
I mean.
That gets to the too many sports thing.
We don't have class sizes of two and three hundred students anymore, and we have a small percentage who actually participate in sports. I think we need to be strategic about it.
Yeah, not, not to give everybody here, but we've talked about this, but the problem is we don't have enough students to, to put enough kids on the field to be competitive.
Right.
And that's why I took Mr. Howard, not all his fault that we didn't have a money program.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah.
So that breakdown you're talking about, so Alex, Alex builds all of our cooperative sponsor partners for their share of the activity, so that's, Alex has all that.
If we could get that, I'd be really curious to just see.
How about our people going somewhere else?
No, no, I'm talking about our, I'm talking about the athletes, like.
That's what I'm talking about. Do we have any people from here going to some other schools?
Yeah, but we can't, like.
How do you, how do you point that out?
Our athletes just leave here and go to another school.
Oh, if they, yeah, but.
Maybe they want to go to state.
Sponsorship within your district.
But my focus is, would you like, what does it look like for our athletic teams if we don't have students from other districts participating? Can we even fill all these rosters?
Well, that's where all gets started, we were helping out the other districts.
Yeah.
So there's something we don't have.
Now it's kind of full circle around.
So at the next, the next, um, meeting, um, they'll, they'll be on the agenda of, um, to approve a cooperative sponsorship of Moisen Hills Golf, which is, therefore, it's already approved it, they've worked with Mr. Turner, so it'll be coming to us next time to, to discuss.
So we should, so we have, at that time, if we have a full team.
Can we ever have a meeting with Chisholm and Nashwauk School Boards? This has a collaborative, this to say, hey, where, this is where, where are you at, what are you doing? I mean, I mean, we sit here in our room and we, we tell them, oh, we're going to get you.
We'd have to have a, we'd have to have a couple referees.
Yeah. Well, that's what it takes, that's what it takes. We had a facilitator one night.
Facilitator, yeah.
And, and, and then maybe it's time that, with all the changes going on, that we get together with those groups and see what we can do. They do it with the airport, I don't know why we can't do it with our school district.
Chisholm.
I think we could, I think we could, or we could, you know, we could certainly put the invitation open.
Well, they changed the name, John, they started with Southern Regional Airport, now we're glad that Chisholm did.
Yeah.
Send the Christmas party invitation.
Well, we could.
Well, it's, it's an interesting concept to, you know, to say, you know, not, not that, I'm not even advocating for it, but it's, it's just an interesting, um, thought, that if we just closed all of our cooperative sponsorships, would that draw students into our district? Would they, do they, are they so passionate about playing golf that they would come and enroll with us to do so?
Back to the initiative, I think it'd be, it, us being the, the big boy on the block saying, hey, come on, let's get together for what your problem is, what your problem is, and we'll tell you what we can do or what you can do to help, say, now make it better for everybody. That just, this, I've always made that comment about the Berlin Wall between here and Chisholm.
Yeah.
Too.
Unless it's the Minnix man, they want, it's still standing.
And there's another one between here and Nashwauk too.
Wow.
And I agree with you, Mike, full-heartedly, but, and, and we, I feel like we have tried, I mean, we need to try again, I'm not suggesting we don't, and the one meeting we were at in the public venue, it got to the point about, you know, like, let's talk, let's, let's put some serious thought into it, and then it, I feel like the whole meeting just broke down, like, Chisholm, they just want to be Chisholm, Nashwauk, they want a new building, their school board members pulled up punches about that, and we left.
So then we did what you were saying, we kind of, did we talk about, let's just make Hiving as, as good as we can make it, and worry about making our district better and better and better, and hope kids just choose to come here?
Well, we've done that, I guess.
But we have, yeah, yeah.
Early childhood.
Yeah.
Field.
This has been ongoing for.
Yes, sorry.
Forever, John, right?
Not to any of them, I mean, this issue is.
Ever since you've been on the school board, right?
I think before that even, yeah.
And another issue is our PSEO students.
Yes, yes.
They're in our district, but they're not in our chairs, right?
We'll keep that up here.
That's a whole nother topic.
That's a whole nother topic, but I wonder how many of those students, you know, just sever ties with our school and don't participate in our athletic.
I don't know.
Yes, I mean, we're always going to have that. Well, we'll continue this discussion. Do you have anything else?
I will believe so, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. I don't believe so. Won't include you.
Hold up, Jack. What we do, are we going to vote, or do I, is that something I have to put on, and something we have to.
No, that was, that was just a discussion item.
Okay.
So we're okay.
I mean, in future, so it's something that we look at in the first season.
Are we not first meeting, because that's where we're going to be.
That's reorganization, yeah, second meeting.
Okay.
We can bring it up at that meeting. Okay, without objection, Director Poulter.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned at four fifty-eight, and thank everybody for coming here.